Mayor, we have two parts to today's presentation. The first one is just a real quick overview for you of the dashboard that's available for the survey now. And we thought it would be really helpful to you and of course, the public to see what that's like because you can drill down pretty deeply and do any kind of analysis you want based on this tool. So we just want to introduce the tool to you. And this is my cue to the presenters, that we're going to keep it really short so that we can get into the roll up the sleeves and talk about the budget more. But let's, let's, let's do this first.
Wonderful. Hello, everyone. My name is Adriana Choquette-Hoffert. I am joined by my teammate Sam Clures. And we're here today on behalf of my sidewalk and our work with the city of Wichita to talk to you a little bit about your resident satisfaction survey. So I'm going to make sure that everybody can see my screen okay. Let me go ahead and pull that up. So just as a starting point, a little bit about us as a company and our work with the city of Wichita thus far, we really, we're a technology company that is on a journey to help democratize data storytelling. And I think one of the most important things that we've learned, not only in our work with Wichita, but in other customers, is that we love to equip change makers like you with the tools that you need to build stronger communities. And one of the ways that we do that is we give you access to the best data about places. We help to help you to easily find insights about communities. And specifically, what we'll be talking about today is build those impactful data stories. And I think one thing that just to zoom out, you know, this is our work. It's all around making data accessible, making it easy to use, making it easy to tell those impactful stories. But I also want to give a little bit of perspective that, you know, we work across a number of customers, everyone from the city of Kansas City to very exciting to hear you all even talk about NLC. It sounds like you're going to a conference, a number of our teammates are next week as well. Because we really enjoy working with them on community level problems, while that does mean a lot of our work is in government, it can be a little bit broader approach. In particular, with the city of Wichita, as we came to work with your team there, a couple of things were really key in starting on this resident satisfaction survey work. And one of those is we really wanted to use the dashboard as a way to tell stories, right? And for not only, I'm sure residents in the city of Wichita, but for a number of our customers as well, it's about saying what it means, why it matters, and how they can use it. And I think especially, you know, PDFs and other formats, they're great, but they're also ways that making the data more interactive can really help to fulfill that data storytelling. And, and right next to that is, we also want to be this, want this to be a place where you can inform stakeholders. And, and that to us is not just about a complete understanding of the community needs, but really, how does that start from an understanding of the survey data itself? So with that, that's just a little bit of setup of our work together thus far. We wanted to give you a sense of the survey that is now at your fingertips in terms of a dashboard itself. So I know you all were working toward a finished survey. And this is the dashboard that presents those insights in a visual format and in an online format. So to orient you just around a couple things within this and the data storytelling aspect, you'll see on the homepage, we give just a little bit of an insight into some of those overall themes that you'll begin to explore within the dashboard itself. And I would say the team at Wichita was really instrumental in saying, hey, for each survey question, we want to make sure that this is laddering up to some of those themes that make it just an easy place for residents to search into. Then within each homepage, we give you just a little bit of description around what to expect in some of the questions. So that can be everything from just a little bit of trends in some of those questions and those key metrics specifically, all the way down to work that the team at Wichita did around the important satisfaction ratings. So again, giving you a place that are both highest importance and where residents are the least satisfied. This homepage of each kind of section here can really just give you an understanding of maybe where to orient yourself or which questions to spend the most time on. In particular, for today, we want to touch on just a couple of questions. And I'm going to pick on Wichita as a place to live is just a first understanding of each visual that you're going to be able to see within the dashboard in particular. But one of the things that you'll see here, and every question has the same treatment, the same data visuals, because we want you to have that data storytelling workflow in a place really to be able to see this of what do those mean over time? What do those mean by different cross tabs? So just as an example here, you'll see in 2020, 74% rated Wichita as a place to live, excellent or good. That jumped nearly 10% in 2022. So again, just a quick snapshot of where have we been and what does that mean for this year? You'll then see any of the questions broken down by their responses in particular. And then we start to give you some trends information. So not only, you know, what does that meant over time, which in this particular case, right, pretty steady at 74% for the past few surveys, and a nice big jump in 2022. So again, just a helpful place that you can start to dig in. But also, what does that mean by city council district? The thing I like about this as well is, for instance, if you are in city council district one with a couple of clicks, I can see what that means for me uniquely. And again, if I want to add some of those comparisons back in just by clicking the visual, it gives you that interactive place to see the complete story and to see where each of those results are over time. One of the things we really pride ourselves in at my sidewalk is not only access to easy data, but most importantly, context of the place and where that happens. And so for every question in this dashboard, you're going to see those results broken down by your city council district. And again, that starts to give you nuance, not just for what is happening within the city, but what is happening within your city council district specifically. And as the next map will show, where those changes over time have really started to, the percent change over time, again, by city council district. So a place for, for each of you to explore and kind of see what that means for your unique city council district. The last few things that I want to highlight here is, again, above, you know, we're looking at trends over time, we're looking at where that's happening. Another important storyline that we want to explore is some different groupings of that information as well. So we look at this as the question, Wichita as a place to live by race and ethnicity. We look at that as a place to live by income and where some of those responses may vary. And we look at Wichita as a place to live by age. So again, a lot to explore within each question and also just starts to give you a sense of where storylines may be unique for either the question and/or for your council district in particular. The last thing that I want to touch on here before I share just, you know, one of our insights is, all of this information is also easily downloadable. So if you wanted to export this as a CSV and analyze or look at the data in that format, you're able to. If you wanted to pull that in as a PNG to a PowerPoint presentation, or if any resident came to this and wanted to access that information themselves, just that little button right there makes it easy to download and share. You'll also see off to the side over here, there's this nice generate PDF button that also gives you the ability, if you wanted to have that by PDF on there also. So again, just a lot of ways that you can work to make sense of it. For our maps in particular, if you did have other GIS analysts within the city who wanted to look at that as a Geo JSON file, again, that is a unique format for that as well. The very last thing that I'll touch on, and then I'll, I'll pause for any questions that we might have. One of the things that we've also provided the team at Wichita, and again, in conjunction with their good work on this as well, is just an understanding of some of the unique insights that we were able to find by going through the survey data and by looking at it in this way. And one insight in particular that we wanted to call attention to was that while satisfaction with Wichita as a place to live is up, which again, you're seeing this jump of almost 10%, fewer residents are satisfied with the direction the city is headed. So if I scroll down here to the overall direction that Wichita is taking, again, you'll see those same, the same treatment of all the visuals, but in this case, 52% in 2020, dropped to 45% this year. And again, paying attention to some of those trends over time, there is some consistency there, but that was one storyline that we started to explore just a little bit of, hey, Wichita is a place to live, some really good ratings and great increase there. And then looking at just the, the direction that Wichita is taking, residents said, hey, that's, that's dropped a little bit here over the last two years as well. So with that, I'm going to take a deep breath and stop presenting here for a moment. I'm happy, and I'm also looking at Elizabeth, if there's anything that was missed in there, but happy to answer any questions or pull up any additional context there.
Hours and hours of fun, if you want to drill down. It is fascinating. Once you start getting into it, it's hard to walk away from it because there's, there's so much data and it's so revealing. And then as you break it down, you know, by the demographics, you look at council district, it's really interesting.
We all have the link.
You should, yes.
I would also just offer as a part of this, while the resident satisfaction survey was a big part that we offered, we have also provided links for unique reports for each city council member that just breaks down the demographics within your city council. So know that as not only a technology partner, but as a data provider, we have about four billion data points in our data library overall. That'll kind of be the next phase of our work with the city of Wichita, but to help tease that up, you will receive both a link to the dashboard itself. So a big part that we offered, we have also provided links for unique reports for each city council member that just breaks down the demographics within your city council. So know that as not only a technology partner, but as a data provider, we have about four billion data points in our data library overall. That'll kind of be the next phase of our work with the city of Wichita, but to help tease that up, you will receive both a link to the dashboard itself.
Can drill down pretty deeply and do any kind of analysis you want based on this tool. So we just want to introduce the tool to you. And this is my cue to the presenters, that we're going to keep it really short so that we can get into the, roll up the sleeves and talk about the budget more. But let's, let's, uh, let's do this first.
Wonderful. Hello, everyone. My name is Adriana Shoket-Hoffert. I am joined by my teammate, Sam Clures. And we're here today on behalf of My Sidewalk and our work with the city of Wichita to talk to you a little bit about your resident satisfaction survey. So I'm going to make sure that everybody can see my screen okay. Let me go ahead and pull that up. So just as a starting point, a little bit about us as a company and our work with the city of Wichita thus far. We really, we're a technology company that is on a journey to help democratize data storytelling. And I think one of the most important things that we've learned, not only in our work with Wichita, but in other customers, is that we love to equip change makers like you with the tools that you need to build stronger communities. And one of the ways that we do that is we give you access to the best data about places. We help to, help you to easily find insights about communities. And specifically what we'll be talking about today is build those impactful data stories. And I think one thing that just to zoom out, you know, this is our work. It's all around making data accessible, making it easy to use, making it easy to tell those impactful stories. But I also want to give a little bit of perspective that, you know, we work across a number of customers. Everyone from the city of Kansas City to, very exciting to hear you all even talk about NLC. It sounds like you're going to a conference, a number of our teammates are next week as well. Because we really enjoy working with them on community level problems. While that does mean a lot of our work is in government, it can be a little bit broader approach. In particular, with the city of Wichita, as we came to work with your team there, a couple of things were really key in starting on this resident satisfaction survey work. And one of those is we really wanted to use the dashboard as a way to tell stories, right? And for not only, I'm sure, residents in the city of Wichita, but for a number of our customers as well. It's about saying what it means, why it matters, and how they can use it. And I think especially, you know, PDFs and other formats, they're great. But there are also ways that making the data more interactive can really help to fulfill that data storytelling. And, and right next to that is, we also want to be this, want this to be a place where you can inform stakeholders. And, and that to us is not just about a complete understanding of the community needs, but really, how does that start from an understanding of the survey data itself? So with that, that's just a little bit of setup of our work together thus far. We wanted to give you a sense of the survey that is now at your fingertips in terms of a dashboard itself. So I know you all were working toward a finished survey. And this is the dashboard that presents those insights in a visual format and in an online format. So to orient you just around a couple of things within this and the data storytelling aspect, you'll see on the homepage, we give just a little bit of an insight into some of those overall themes that you'll begin to explore within the dashboard itself. And I would say the team at Wichita was really instrumental in saying, hey, for each survey question, we want to make sure that this is laddering up to some of those themes that make it just an easy place for residents to search into. Then within each homepage, we give you just a little bit of description around what to expect in some of the questions. So that can be everything from just a little bit of trends in some of those questions and those key metrics specifically, all the way down to work that the team at Wichita did around the important satisfaction ratings. So again, giving you a place that are both highest importance and where residents are the least satisfied. This homepage of, of each kind of section here can really just give you an understanding of maybe where to orient yourself or which questions to spend the most time on. In particular, for today, we want to touch on just a couple of questions. And I'm going to pick on Wichita as a place to live is just a, a first understanding of each visual that you're going to be able to see within the dashboard in particular. But one of the things that you'll see here, and every question has the same treatment, the same data visuals, because we want you to have that data storytelling workflow in a place really to be able to see this of what do those mean over time, what do those mean by different cross tabs? So just as an example here, you'll see in 2020, 74% rated Wichita as a place to live, excellent or good. That jumped nearly 10% in 2022. So again, just a quick snapshot of where have we been and what does that mean for this year? You'll then see any of the questions broken down by their responses in particular. And then we start to give you some trends information. So not only, you know, what does that meant over time, which in this particular case, right? Pretty steady at 74% for the past few surveys and a nice big jump in 2022. So again, just a helpful place that you can start to dig in. But also, what does that mean by city council district? The thing I like about this as well is, for instance, if you are in city council district one with a couple of clicks, I can see what that means for me uniquely. And again, if I want to add some of those comparisons back in just by clicking the visual, it gives you that interactive place to see the complete story and to see where each of those results are over time. One of the things we really pride ourselves in at My Sidewalk is not only access to easy data, but most importantly, context of the place and where that happens. And so for every question in this dashboard, you're going to see those results broken down by your city council district. And again, that starts to give you nuance, not just for what is happening within the city, but what is happening within your city council district specifically. And as the next map will show, where those changes over time have really started to, the percent change over time, again, by city council district. So a place for, for each of you to explore and kind of see what that means for your unique city council district. The last few things that I want to highlight here is, again, above, you know, we're looking at trends over time. We're looking at where that's happening. Another important storyline that we want to explore is some different groupings of that information as well. So we look at this as the question Wichita as a place to live by race and ethnicity. We look at that as a place to live by income and where some of those responses may vary. And we look at Wichita as a place to live by age. So again, a lot to explore within each question. And also just starts to give you a sense of where storylines may be unique for either the question and/or for your council district in particular. The last thing that I want to touch on here before I share just, you know, one of our, our insights is all of this information is also easily downloadable. So if you wanted to export this as a CSV and analyze or look at the data in that format, you're able to. If you wanted to pull that in as a PNG to a PowerPoint presentation, or if any resident came to this and wanted to access that information themselves, just that little button right there makes it easy to download and share. You'll also see off to the side over here, there's this nice generate PDF button that also gives you the ability, if you wanted to have that by PDF on there also. So again, just a lot of ways that you can work to make sense of it. For our maps in particular, if you did have other GIS analysts within the city who wanted to look at that as a geo JSON file, again, that is a unique format for that as well. The very last thing that I'll touch on, and then I'll, I'll pause for any questions that we might have. One of the things that we've also provided the team at Wichita, and again, in conjunction with their good work on this as well, is just an understanding of some of the unique insights that we were able to find by going through the survey data and by looking at it in this way. And one insight in particular that we wanted to call attention to was that while satisfaction with Wichita as a place to live is up, which again, you're seeing this jump of almost 10%, fewer residents are satisfied with the direction the city is headed. So if I scroll down here to the overall direction that Wichita is taking, again, you'll see those same, uh, the same treatment of all the visuals. But in this case, 52% in 2020, dropped to 45% this year. And again, paying attention to some of those trends over time. There is some consistency there, but that was one storyline that we started to explore just a little bit of, hey, Wichita is a place to live, some really good ratings and great increase there. And then looking at just the, the direction that Wichita is taking, residents said, hey, that's, that's dropped a little bit here over the last two years as well. So with that, I'm going to take a, a deep breath and stop presenting here for a moment. I'm happy, and I'm also looking at Elizabeth, if there's anything that was missed in there, but happy to answer any questions or pull up any additional context there.
Hours and hours of fun, if you want to drill down. It's, it is fascinating. Once you start getting into it, it's hard to walk away from it because there's, it's, there's so much data and it's so revealing. And then as you break it down, you know, by the demographics, you look at council district, it's really interesting.
We all have the link.
You should, yes.
I would also just offer as a part of this, while the resident satisfaction survey was a big part that we offered, we have also provided links for unique reports for each city council member that just breaks down the demographics within your city council. So know that as not only a technology partner, but as a data provider, we have about four billion data points in our data library overall. That'll kind of be the next phase of our work with the city of Wichita. But to help tease that up, you will receive both a link to the dashboard itself and we have some unique reports for each of you by city council district as well.
Yeah, the, the back dashboard that she's demoed today, it can be found at wichita.gov/survey.
And we provide this to you to provide context for the next part of our discussion. And that's talking about the budget, right? We'll have, we're going to be spending some time talking about moving strategically towards 2025. And I think there's some good data here that'll help you in that regard. I think that's it. I want to thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you all. Great to be here. Thanks for your partnership. We appreciate it too.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth to walk through our background material on the budget.
Good afternoon. My name's Elizabeth Gultry. I work in the finance department. I serve as the budget officer. Today, I am presenting a budget workshop to you all that covers four topics. Those topics are a budget outlook that includes some summary of revenue volatility for our biggest sources of revenue in the general fund. I've also included a short discussion of the permanent reserve. There's some slides that connect ARPA backed to the general fund budget for this planning period. And at the end, there's some discussion of budget prioritization. And this budget outlook and discussion of revenue volatility starts with expenditures. Just an overview on how we develop budget forecasts. We prepare a model that's based on current policy direction and economic conditions, which have changed somewhat just during the development of this PowerPoint. At this point in 2023, each month, we close the month in the accounting system. At this point in 2023, we've only closed two months. So it's relatively early in the process to be developing and sharing publicly a forecast. But I also think that it's important because I know that things will change. But overall, the outlook, I think, will stay relatively the same. Staff provide a baseline outlook that's both short term and long term. Of course, the things that we're talking about in 2023, we have more certainty than we do as we go out long term. But I will share the assumptions with you. One of the, the good news about developing a revenue forecast like this, it allows a process to be focused on sustainability, on policy options, on priorities, rather than at the last minute to be hashing out the forecast itself in June. So that's one of the advantages of a forecast like this. Why projections matter? With early warning, adjustments to the budget can be much more strategic than they would have been otherwise. Obviously, that wasn't the case in 2020 when the COVID pandemic started with, that was an abrupt change in service adjustments, but that's not the case here. Service delivery impacts are less abrupt when you're able to make changes over time. Also, another element which ties back to the quarterly report presentation, when you make these adjustments, you can maintain your fiscal health of your organization, which includes your reserve levels, your debt levels, and have operating surpluses. So these prior charts are from the 2023 adopted budget, which was adopted last August. By far, the two largest components of the general fund are fire and police or public safety departments. And the largest type of expenditure in the general fund is salaries and benefits at about two, three fourths of the budget. When we updated the expenditure projections for the general fund, we incorporated revised labor contracts and insurance rates into the budget. So this updated projection includes any changes that occurred since then. We reached out to departments in January and February. They made adjustments to the costs of doing the business at the same service level that the budget, adjusted budget included. So that would include increase in contracts, for example. Additionally, we update utilities and fuel costs. We keep a close eye on those and update them throughout the year. In 2023, at this point, we anticipate that the budget will be $16 million higher in the 2023 revised budget than the 2023 adopted budget. Nearly half of that increase is in the fire department and nearly all of that increases to wages. There are other increases to wages in the general fund in the 2023 revised budget that are reflective of the salary and classification ordinances that were approved in December. The balance of increases are to things like contractuals and supplies. Like I said, expenditures in the revised budget are expected to be $16 million higher. Wage increases are modeled in this forecast, but there's much more modest increases budgeted in 2026 to 2027 than what we have budgeted in '23 to '25. And if you were with us the last time, we went through a pretty prolonged and significant economic downturn, you'll remember that that's one of the ways that we budgeted, that we balanced the budget then. On the revenue side, we have a well diversified revenue. Mark walked through that during the quarterly presentation. Our largest source of revenue is property tax. That's also remitted to the debt service fund. It has its own mill levy. Our second largest source of revenue was franchise fees. We're expecting that to be closer to 18 million, 18% in the revised, followed by sales tax and then also addressed interest earnings. Our different types of revenue respond differently to economic conditions. There's a lag in when we receive the revenue. On the case of sales tax, we receive it two months usually after the transaction takes place. On property tax, the lag can be up to three years. Each of our revenues has different and overlapping recovery periods and they have different cyclical characteristics. When I refer to cyclical characteristics, I'm saying characteristics that connect to economic cycles. So some of our revenues are very much connected to economic cycles and some of them have their own different kind of volatility. Our first revenue type to look at today is interest earnings. This doesn't show up on the pie chart as one of the largest sources of revenue. In the 2023 revised budget, we anticipate that 5% of revenue in the general fund will be from interest earnings. This revenue source has pretty dramatic volatility. There's a history of it increasing by plus or minus $5 million from year to year. The good news from a standpoint of fiscal sustainability is that when we've had dramatic increases or marked increases in interest earnings in the last few years, it corresponds to transfers that were made to the permanent reserve. And that is probably in line with best practices. This graph, if you were to look at a graph of Fed funds rates, it would probably be pretty close to what this one looks like. The fa, the factors that impact interest earnings, there's two of one, two of them. The first is the value of your portfolio and the second one is interest rates of the things that you're invested in. So Mark mentioned that we're invested in agencies and, and treasuries. So interest earnings have fluctuated. There was a period when I, when I started in the budget office, I didn't really know that we had interest earnings as a revenue source. It was a new revenue source to me when it started growing. The lowest we had was $300,000 in interest earnings. We're obviously anticipating a much higher amount this year and that will be used to balance the budget. It's positive to have great interest earnings, but it also can impact borrowing costs. Franchise fees is about 20% of the general fund revenue. If you look here, it, it decl, it declined during a period when many of our other revenue sources were increasing. It's impacted dramatically by weather, technology, and the other factors that are impacting its growth at this point are commodity prices. And that's related to sanctions on Russian natural gas. Natural gas is both the cost of natural gas plus the commodity plus the transmission. It's also an input in electricity generation and that's been reflected in energy bills over the last year. This is a revenue source that's volatile and difficult to forecast. There's been some volatility in natural gas costs due to mild winter conditions this year. The first two years, the first two months of 2023, franchise fees revenue have been very strong. Then we cut over to electricity in the summer months and then back to natural gas in the last months of the year. There is considerable amount of volatility. It, it's just all tied to commodity prices and weather. It can be difficult to forecast. Sales tax. Sales tax is about 14% of the general fund. The other fund that it's remitted to, of course, is the local sales tax fund, has an easy name. This graph is a pretty reflective of regional economic trends rather than global commodity prices or Fed funds rates. We expect moderate growth of 2% during the planning period. At this point in 2023, monthly revenue seems to be tracking with inflation, which is good news. But if, if that trend were to change or economic conditions were to weaken, I would expect that we would have a slowing of revenue growth in this revenue type. Sales tax is economically sensitive, of course, and receipts have a short lag time. So there's a two-month lag between when transactions take place and we receive the sales tax. Ideally, this revenue is reviewed quarterly as part of the quarterly report rather than on a monthly basis.
Does that include, and are these forecasts including the possibility of the food sales tax going away?
No, that wouldn't be a policy change and we haven't modeled, modeled any policy changes in our projection.
Okay, so this is all to say in that they're going to keep the food sales tax in. We are looking at, oh, that's the next one.
That's an excellent question.
And I believe it's $11 million we're looking at, less down the line if, if they enact it without making us whole.
Yeah, if that policy changed for me, we would definitely have to update our forecasts.
Okay, so this is also star bonds like they're, the food sales tax is still included in the star bonds as well?
Yeah, this is just a forecast for general fund revenue.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome. The general fund's enough for today. So next one is property tax. And you know, back to local sales tax. You know, at the end of Mark's quarterly presentation, he said, you know, stormy seas may be ahead. And I think another way to think of sales tax and property tax in this period where there's slow growth, it was almost like we were in the doldrums. We couldn't catch a wind. There was just very, very slow growth from year to year. And when you still have, it's, you know, there's still, you still have continual demands for services. You still have, you know, a need to attract and retain employees and we just had incredibly slow growth for that period. And sales tax, comparing the two, it had that kind, that, that very slow growth for a slightly different period. Thankfully, they weren't at the same time, but it did make budgeting very difficult. Revenue for property taxes based on two variables. The first is assessed valuation and the second one is the mill levy. It is, you know, you only receive the assessed valuation notice once a year. So until you receive that, it's, you know, it's, it's a matter of conjecture and guessing. But once you have the assessed valuation notice and you've turned in your, your mill levy and what have you, the only volatility in this revenue is the degree to which there's delinquencies. Just a little bit more about property tax. The budget process is governed by the state budget law and that includes the property tax lid. So we will receive our estimated valuation notice by June 15th. Then the city has until July 20th to notify the county of our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate based on preliminary estimates and a flat mill levy, which we've had for quite a while, remaining at the RNR for 2024, would reduce revenues by eight to nine million. So this projection is based on the current, the policy direction that we've been working with for decades. And so it, and, and it would, we would have a flat mill levy and exceed the RNR. This is a general fund revenue summary. I think what's interesting to note is the change from '24 to '25 is basically zero. That is because of the drop off in interest earnings from '24 to '25. And then we've modeled slow growth during that period. That's been more typical of what the city of Wichita has experienced. And we'll continue, I mean, every month, we will continue to update that revenue summary. This is the starting place. So this is what the general fund outlook looks like with that revenue and expenditure forecasting. Where the good news is we're balanced in '23. We have a deficit of 2.7 million in '24, but the ARPA funding is available to subsidize the general fund. But then in '25 through '26, we have deficits starting at 18 million and growing to 22 million. And I just want to caution you, this is based on very, very moderate salaries and benefits increases compared to what we've seen in the, in the recent, recently. So just to summarize, '23, we have stronger revenue growth, mostly due to interest earnings and franchise fees. I've modeled in labor contracts and then ARPA is available to balance. '25 to '27, we've lost the ARPA safety net. We have very moderate revenue growth. It's more typical of what the city has seen. Wage cost growth is very moderate, but still outpaces revenue. In the budget process, we'll need to focus on addressing this forecasted structural imbalance in '25 to '27. So just, just to disclose what these variables are that could change and that we'll be constantly updating things. Economic conditions are relatively uncertain at this point. I thought I was behind on creating this PowerPoint and I'm glad I waited as long as I did to put it together. Wage and benefit costs are a major variable, 75% of the general fund. Any changes there have it and make an impact. Vacancies and employee demographics make an impact. It's a goal of the organization to recruit and retain employees, but you know, there is a financial, that has a financial impact. And then, as a council member said, policy changes would impact the forecast variables. Yes.
Just a real quick question related to your forecast variables back on previous slide. We currently have 40 firefighters funded under the SAFER grant. Then that was for '23, '24, and '25, I believe. So going into '25, '26, '27, are those 40 positions funded under this projection?
Yeah, I, I did a poor job of checking my notes. It said here, it doesn't include grant funded positions. So I, this forecast is based on the current listing of positions that's in the general fund budget.
So if we'd want to continue that SAFER grant, we're going to have to increase this.
Yeah, then instead of having an $18 million gap, it would be closer to '22, '23? It's 42 positions?
I think we'll need to see those projections as well as we go forward with this. Because that's a, that was a one-time grant, I believe.
Blue was texting me.
Probably asking the same thing.
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
So if the SAFER grant positions are not included in this forecast for '25, '26, and '27, we're going to need to see what those numbers are going to be.
That is correct and yes.
Okay. Further discussion, questions?
Next section. Okay, quickly on the permanent reserve. The permanent reserve was created in 2009. One-time monies have been transferred in a number of times. The only, the direction that related to the permanent reserve is included in budget documents and that expenditures are limited to specific city council actions. The current balance in the permanent reserve is nearly 20 million.
Is that including the 1.5 million that we took out last week?
No, it doesn't. That, that will occur later this year.
How much does the current reserve typically have? The, the permanent reserve, the rainy day fund, whatever we want to call it? How much does it typically have in your experience here?
It's, you know, it, it didn't have a lot for quite a long time. And then due to interest earnings and the ARPA and the CARES awards, we were able to transfer money out for a number of years.
The permanent reserve is a little artificial in that eight million was transferred from the sale of property on Kellogg. So that gets us, I mean, so you'd be down, you know, eight million below that, you know? So that was a big chunk. And then the last two years, we've been able to move money, significant funds in. I would say, when we were going through the recession, there was probably almost nothing that was in the permanent reserve. And we were pretty low, lower than Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's wanted us to be in the general fund as well.
And now we're higher than?
Right.
Been in quite a while.
Right, and you know, we talked about this. I mean, it's, we've been talking about the deficit in '25 for probably two I mean, it's, we've been talking about the deficit in twenty-five for probably two years. And so the idea was to try to take the, that interest earnings especially and try to put that into the permanent reserve so we could try to, we could, I won't say engineer a soft landing, because that's probably not going to be possible, but we could at least take care of some of the, take some of the edge off of the deficits that are being projected.
Right, if we did nothing with the budget at this point, we could write a check for that first deficit out of the permanent reserve if we wanted.
Right, right. But it's probably better to use it over a period of time.
We'll obviously make adjustments and make the budget actually balanced. But that's, that's pretty good to know that we're at possibly a record amount in that permanent reserve that gives us, again, if we didn't show up, all the projections are accurate. If we didn't do any changes, we would, at the very least, be able to pay off that eighteen million deficit. But of course, that's not best practice and not what we want to do. It just shows that how significant that permanent reserve fund is at this moment.
Yeah, and it's pretty speculative on my part, but I would imagine that if you would draw down a reserve that quickly, that it would impact your bond rating.
Permanent reserve is not actually taken into account with bonds according to city manager.
On a GAAP, so rating agencies review reserves closely and they encourage clear reserve policies on a GAAP basis. The permanent reserve is a sub-fund of the general fund. So that's reported together on a GAAP basis. At this point.
What do you mean GAAP basis?
GAAP, it's generally accepted accounting procedures. So there's different bases of accounting in our, our ACFA. And one of them, the one that, when we work on the budgets, and that I work with most is the budgetary basis of accounting. But the, these, these funds are reported together on a GAAP basis because it's technically a sub-fund of the general fund.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I don't know if I got you far, but there you go. So I think that the practices and the use of the permanent reserve, both expenditures out of the reserve and transfers into the reserve have been in, have followed best practices. But at this point, we don't have a policy in place for transfers in and out of the permanent reserve. If a rating agency were to review our financials for 2022 and say, well done, city of Wichita, you have increased your, your permanent reserve and your general fund balances. But how, show me that you're not going to draw those down immediately when ARPA ends. We don't have a policy in place that would assure them of that. The other thing to keep in mind as far as growing balances, I still think of our budget as being a two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty million dollar budget. I'm not quite sure why, but what we're looking at is a three-hundred-dollar, a three-hundred million dollar budget on the expenditure side. So implicitly, if you're going to hit that target of two months of expenditures, which is the GFOA best practice for your fund balance, just in the general fund, you need to increase your reserves on a, your, your general fund, but fund balance on a nominal basis to keep pace with that. All right, on to ARPA. And this is not everything you ever would dream of knowing about ARPA. This is just connecting ARPA back to the general fund. That report was shared with you. It's, it's online, it's exciting and interesting. And this is just connecting ARPA to the general fund. As you remember, we were awarded seventy-two-point-four million in twenty-one. The, the timeline hasn't changed. All funds need to be obligated by the end of twenty-four and spent by the end of twenty-six. There's a revenue loss calculation. We expect it to be less favorable for the city of Wichita than we anticipated and that impacts flexibility and I'll go into that in a little bit. This is the current approved conceptual plan that's included in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty, no, twenty-twenty-three adopted budget. All seventy-two-point-four million dollars is allocated in this plan. Last year, there was less need to use funds in the general fund support category than we had anticipated. There were a number of projects that were set up at year-end that weren't transfers into the general fund, but, excuse me, support general fund operations. Additionally, it appears that we'll need to use less general fund support in 2024 than we had initially anticipated. And so there's additional funding that would be available, but we have less flexibility than we thought. And the reason for that is that there's an ARPA revenue loss calculation that we report to them each quarter. We do the calculation annually. For 2020 and 2021, our revenue loss in total was forty-six-point-three million. It's based on our twenty-twenty, our twenty-nineteen revenue. And then they had, there's a ton of calculations, but just generally five-point-eight percent revenue growth. And when they published the rule and they said, you know, your revenue loss is based on having anything less than five-point-eight percent revenue growth every year, I thought, well, that's not going to be hard because we generally don't have five-point-eight percent revenue growth, but we have. So that being the case, we'll probably have a lot less revenue loss in 2022 than we thought. We probably won't have any in 2023 due to interest earnings. There could be some in 2024, but that's really cutting it close because the ACFA is published in June and everything needs to be obligated by December. So what I'm preparing you for is the concept that of the funds that are, have not been allocated and may be available, those are going to be, need to be spent in the categories that aren't the flexible revenue loss category. But good news, we are having a third party review the CIP projects that were already included as having ARPA in our CIP and operating budget. And they're reviewing those for potential eligibility in specific categories.
Let us know if you can't figure out a way to spend that twelve-point-four. I'm sure we can come up with some ideas.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it's a lot of public health type related things and it's.
We've got ideas, let us know.
So anyhow, so that's something, these are kind of, these, this is all things to think about, right? This is just the first episode in the budget development story. So I've already gone through this, so I won't, I won't repeat that. But is everyone, are people comfortable with that con, like you've kind of understood the concept? So. So, on to budget prioritization. So reductions to balance the budget can be either tactical or they can be strategic. In 2020, we had really no other choice to be tactical. A lot of those tactical decisions were made for us due to public health considerations. And then we'd also come off a relatively recent strategic planning process that really was very helpful in developing those, that response to the expected revenue shortfall in 2020. But reductions to balance a budget can also be strategic. And, you know, at this point, in, you know, reading is funny to read about balancing a budget when you've actually done it. But one of the downsides of a tactical approach to balancing a budget is that you discard your priorities and your values in, in service of just balancing your budget, you know? And you make a lot of decisions that you wouldn't have done if you'd had a North Star, so to speak. You're just looking at line items, there's no new additives, there's no new additives, no additional staff or programs, you're just holding vacancies perpetually. And you end up with some of the problems that we're facing now, which are, we have, one of the things we did, and I think that we're all in agreement, we would never do it again, is that we held a police recruit class in one of these years that had slow, I can't remember if it was slow property tax or sales tax growth, but we deferred to a police recruit class and I don't think anyone would ever want to do that again. But those are the kind of decisions when you're in, when you've, in that case, we had done a lot of strategic budgeting and gone through it and gone through it and we're just, you have to balance. And so that's why I think that we have a gift in some sense, that we're balanced for twenty-three. We can balance with ARPA in twenty-four. And that's going to require a strategic approach to balancing in twenty-five and beyond. So, want to add anything? No, okay. So I think it's inevitable. The good news is that we have a lot of strategic budgeting elements already on hand. We've got financial forecasts, the citizen survey dashboard is live. We're working on a project to update our performance outcomes program so we can connect more data. The My Sidewalk data visualizations, in addition to the citizen survey, they have all the federal data sets and we can use that to visualize data. We have previous budget prioritization efforts that we can build on, which is a great starting place. And then another element to strategic budgeting, which we haven't started on yet, but we will learn this practice because of ARPA is program evaluations. So to evaluate new and existing programs to see what works. So, the next steps as far as budgeting goes, we will continue to update the twenty-three to twenty-five budget and look at the longer-term planning horizon as well. You all in the community and departments have the citizen survey dashboard and results. You can lose hours in that data and I invite you to check it out. I, we have twenty, twenty-eighteen prioritization materials that I can share with you if you're interested of the outcome of that process in twenty-eighteen. And the most important thing, though, is that we need to develop a framework for a structurally balanced budget. And. Okay, yeah, I mean, the, we've already, I, I think you've already, you're scheduled with me in April and May. We have, we're, we're scheduled to go to all the DABS in May and do resident, online resident engagement as well thereto. So I guess what I would propose is that we would, you know, focus our attention on the second half of the budget process rather than the beginning.
What I'd like to do is underscore what Elizabeth said at the beginning of the presentation. And that is, if we're strategic and start to move towards trying to address the deficit in twenty-five, we start that in this budget process, that'll make it a lot easier for you as we go forward. What we can do, if you want, is we could bring to you at the next workshop, in concept, a balanced budget approach for 2025. What that would do is give you a starting point. We could, when you look at what we did in twenty, two thousand eighteen with the council that threw, they had basically touchables and untouchables, right? And I'm not sure that framework will be beneficial to you right now, but we can give that to you. But if we just try to do an abstract discussion of priorities, it, it'll be difficult to get to eighteen million or whatever that deficit number will be. We'll continue to revise the revenues side of this. But at some point, you're going to be faced with the question, that is, what should we be providing as basic service? And what's that definition of basic service today? Because it, it has evolved over time. And where we used to say police, fire and public works and everything else slides, which was what we did during the Great Recession. I'm not sure that that's acceptable with the community right now or to the council. So it's, it's a harder, it's like grabbing Jell-O, right? It's a little harder to be able to determine what it is that is a sustainable organization going forward. So you tell us what you need and we'll give you, we can give you a starting point and we can look at trade-offs as well, right? I mean, simplest thing is I could look at all the departments and say, let's show the council what a five percent across-the-board cut looks like. So and you could identify what those cuts would be in all the departments. And then the council can come back and say, well, it's not, that's not acceptable here and that's not acceptable there. And that's one way to go through it. But we're open to whatever tools or help you need in order to be able to talk about this next, next time we meet.
Yeah, I think that just generally over the last three years, it's been such a, it's, I think, a cry, not just our budget process, but we've been, it's been such a change to respond to COVID and the community and then all the different priorities. And so this is our first chance since then to do strategic budgeting, which is a great opportunity. But it is, it couldn't be more important. So it's, it's kind of a difficult easing back into the process. Than if we were dealing with a six-million-dollar deficit.
Mayor and I exchanged, exchanged emails earlier this week, right, over the weekend because there are some concerns people are expressing about service levels, right? And that, a lot of that comes out of our inability to be able to fill vacant positions. Simplest way out of this is define what our new workforce looks like and then manage expectations on service levels. That's one way to do it and that's what's happening in the private sector now. You know, we've talked about that, but if you look at what some of the big announcements in, especially in the IT industry, they're right sizing their organization. I don't know if that's a avenue we want to look at, you know, that's, but again, that's a more strategic thought, right? Because then you say, yep, right size means this in public safety and it means this in other departments, so.
Absolutely, and I think we have to think outside the box as we move forward and be more modern with our approach or strategic. I think it's the word that folks have been utilizing. I sense a little stress for those who had to budget during the Great Recession and the fears of that timeframe seems to seep into our budget talks as we move forward. Of, of course, we're, hopefully, won't be in a situation like we, we have been back in oh-seven, oh-eight moving forward. But I think having folks on staff who have that kind of cautionary tale of making sure that we are moving forward strategically and just in case the, the bottom falls out, basically like it did in 2020. So, but I do just want to thank staff because regardless of the ups and downs that we've seen, not only with public policy, but public health and trying to navigate the current timeframes that we live in, we've had for the last three years a budget surplus. The last budget was one of the most transformational documents we've seen, at least in the last few years that I, I've been here, but even before then, where we actually responded to public input with the services that people expected out of the city. It was a dramatic shift. And in doing so, you know, I, I think it's getting to the point that the manager just mentioned is, is what is, we talk about right sizing, we also need to be talking about right servicing. What, what is the, the role of the city beyond public safety and water utilities, that type of stuff? What, what is the role of the city moving forward and what's the expectations from those who live in our city? So I really appreciate not only this dialogue, but frankly, the, the staff's ability to be agile and to make adjustments as needed.
So what's, what's next? Well, you, you've already had the February twenty-eighth workshop where the original citizen survey results and the C2 options. Now we've got the workshop today. We're booked again for April twenty-fifth. So, I mean, the good news, bad news is there's no time to develop a strategic plan by July. But the good news is a lot of people say that strategic plans don't get you far and that strategic planning is what makes the difference. And I think that we'll be able to do that this year and create a, a framework that will service well for a number of years. May is set aside for resident engagement. And so rather than focusing the community on the, the next year of the budget process, that might be a good time to focus them longer-term or medium-term, what have you, and focus that discussion. And then we have a workshop scheduled for May twenty-third to get together and talk about the resident feedback from the online, social media and the DABS. And we'll wrap that up just in time to get our AV estimate in June, mid-June. And then this is what summer looks like. Presentation of the budget, July eleventh. Evening public hearing on August first, another public hearing on August fifteenth and then wrapping up budget adoption on August twenty-second. So the good news with the budget is it has a deadline and it ends and then we move on to the next one, seems to be how it's going. So that's what I have for you today. It is what it is. I mean, we've been talking about this happening for some time. I'm, I'm glad, I'm, I think that we're well-prepared and have good tools to go on this journey. But it is, it is, it's, it's going to be significant work, so.
So I had two things real quick. On that slide, could we move the August first public hearing to August third? Because that is a primary day and I know a lot of folks want to go vote.
No, election day is the first Tuesday after, it can't be on August first. It has to be on the eighth.
It is?
Brian, what day is it?
Primary date's August first.
It is? Oh, I thought you couldn't do that, but I guess you can. Okay.
So August third is a Thursday, kind of keeps with our normal practice.
Yeah, I'll have to visit with my family, but I guess that you can do it without me.
Or a different day.
I've already missed a lot of things, but yeah.
Let's be strategic and not tactical when it comes to this date.
The following Tuesday is National Night Out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do this presentation in NASCAR Park, National Night Out, PowerPoint up on the big screen.
And then on the.
Yeah.
On that tool that we've used before, and I don't know if this is too much, but we got a lot of good feedback out of that. But is there a way to prompt citizens to give some thoughts on this year and next year? Like how we can prepare for 2025? If there's service deliveries, they might be okay with. If there's service deliveries, they might be okay with this year.
So it'll probably be, again, if, if you're trying to create a sustainable budget, you're probably not going to be in a position to be talking about new programming in twenty four, right? So what you could do is engage, you can do an appropriate intro and talk about the challenges that we're facing, could be facing in twenty five. And then you can actually have them balance a budget with the tool.
Right, yeah, in two thousand and twenty, when we launched it, the other years we started with a balanced budget and then you're just moving things around. So we would start them with a not balanced budget. So we probably in August or on August, April twenty fifth, we'd, um, uh, you know, we'd have updated projections, we'd talk through things, hopefully we'd be at a number less than eighteen million, but it could be more. Um, and then that's where we would start the budget simulator from.
Okay, no, I, I like that idea because that also gives us something to see where, where people are at.
I think the other thing too is when we first did it, we had about forty services and we noticed that people gave up before they got to the end, and then we moved back to more like sixteen to eighteen services and made it a little bit easier. But if we're heading back to the same type of planning that we did in two thousand and eighteen, which is to not just look at something large but to look at the discrete services within that, you know, not just to look at street cleaning, but to look at all the things that street cleaning comprises. We would probably have more services in the simulator, so it could be a heavier, it will be a heavier lift for the people doing it. But I think that it could give you more, um, more ti- more impactful data, if that makes sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
I think someone asked this question, I think it was Vice Mayor, about the sales tax, the reduction on grocery and how it impacts ours, that's not factored in.
No, cause that's a policy change that has not occurred.
So they, three things we haven't factored in here, is keeping it at a revenue neutral rate, the sales tax and the addition of the safer grant positions beyond twenty five.
Yeah, so then you'd be probably, if sales tax is eleven million for both funds, right? So then you'd be five and a half plus nine, so five and a half plus nine plus another four. Uh, eighteen, so you'd be in a thirty six million dollar hole.
Managing expectations.
That's about ten percent, um. All right, anything, any other great questions?
I mean, like, let's, let's be cautious that Topeka actually has to pass something and get it to work before we actually adjust our budget to respond to that. Uh, lots of things changed in the last minutes, we'll keep moving. It's true to be concerned if anyone is going to tamper with one of our revenue sources, to make sure that we, we can be prepared for that, but again, the uh, just appreciate staff's work on this, I mean, it's, so far we've been anticipating issues that could come down and, and hurt our budget, but we've been very good at avoiding them and still uh, adjusting our budget so that not only does it balance, but it exceeds expectations in services. Do you know off the top of your head what street sweepers cost us?
You mean to purchase one or to provide the service?
Provide the service per year.
I don't even want to guess right now, I don't know if anyone has a budget book around.
I was gonna bring it, I forgot.
Sorry.
Does anybody? I'm sorry, you guys are the kind of folks who would know that off the top of your head, so I figured I'd ask.
Completely discredited, I could go find it online, but I don't even want to guess.
This thing's like a five hundred page document and I'm asking for like one line, so I just, just because it was mentioned, I, I just, it would be interesting, but uh.
But yeah, that division includes some other services, like alleyway cleanup and it responds to illegal dumping. And so there's a lot of times, I guess it's just an example, we have services and they have one name and then there's a number of services embedded without them, and within them. And so um, having that more detailed approach to the budget simulator is why I've referred to that. But I guess that's why we have a printed budget book that even I use all day long. Mine's very worn out.
So I guess between Councilmember Frye or, or Bob, were there any actions taken before two thousand and eighteen by council to kind of help? Cause I know what I walked into, but I know it was projected two thousand and eighteen to be a little worse than what it was. Did council do anything different beforehand, like cutting back services early or?
We did, we, we cut, I, I'd have to go back and can't remember exactly what we cut. Some of it was, they weren't straight up eliminations of programs, there were modifications. We also consolidated some services where we had multiple departments involved, um, so that we were more efficient in what we did. Mowing's a good example, we had multiple departments involved in mowing and that's when we went and got the Harvard um, assistance and how we put together that program. I'd have to, I, I, I'll have to refresh my memory. You know, probably the more significant changes were in the early part of the recession and we really did, you know, we went from tactical to trying to become strategic over the, you know, second, third years of the, of the recession.
Yeah, the other thing that we did is we shifted mill levy back and forth from the general fund to the debt service and fund and back.
Yeah, and that was a, that was a big move.
Yeah, the debt service fund used to have a mill levy of ten and now it's seven and a half. So unfortunately, it's like, kind of gone through, that, I don't know that you can build a GO at large budget with less than seven and a half mil.
And you know, that's a good point, Elizabeth, I think the council's uh, thought process changed at that time, right? So that you look holistically at the CIP and the operating budget and rec- and, and recognize that you the council at that time didn't want to cut back on streets and some other what we'd call base infrastructure, but sacrificed on some more discretionary expenses uh, and the CIP in order to be able to shift money into the operating budget. So, um, again, all part of the discussion.
Yeah, we did, the, another big one was a, was maybe slightly before you got here, was the recreation center review.
Uh, actually, I was here for that.
Yeah, we were here for that, the cost recovery py- pyramid for park and recreation services.
Councilmember Frye was involved.
Remember that one, that was. Yeah.
You were on park board, that's what I meant, yep.
Yep, that was another one. And we've done a lot, you know, it's been a lot, so. Anyhow, the other thing to caution you just is, you know, the, the recession, the, the downturn that we faced during that period, it was, it was a long one. And you know, a shorter downturn, um, you start to have recovery in revenues at different times and there's advantages to that one. That one just was a long downturn and the recovery never even, it, it's like, when, when's it gonna happen? So I, I don't think that, to the point of those of you who are thinking, we're not, we're not fighting the last battle. Um, but we have fought a battle, and so, um, there's definitely advantages in having strategic planning on the front end rather than just imagining that it'll clear up within a year.
So just, I guess, on the modeling, the economic modeling, what's your, what's the perspective for job growth? That you, you all have utilized as a base off past models?
Yeah, I don't, you mean job growth at the city of Wichita or job growth in the regional economy?
Economic growth.
Yeah, I would say that does have some impact on sales tax, but.
Well, and property tax and.
Yeah, I, I would say there's even, even other factors that impact those as well, so it's, it's weird to tease it out.
So, Mark, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we brought in nine point nine million more this last year, part of that was because of economic activity and growth and.
But a lot of it is inflation, the cost of goods increasing.
So Mayor, your question is, uh, does our forecast reflect job growth and things of that nature that we know?
Well, I'm sure it does, what I'm asking is it based off past, um, cause a lot of, I think, the modeling that, that comes out of the budget department is based on past performance and is that what we're basing potential economic growth on?
We work with uh, CDBR at WSU quite a bit, they provide an economic profile for us. And we use that to basically inform our projections and then we use anecdotal data. I mean, obviously, the chip factory is probably going to have a pretty significant impact on City Wichita. Uh, now, we do not have modeling that is so empirical that we specifically adjust sales tax and property tax and things of that nature. But again, it provides anecdotal feedback to our model, if, does that make sense?
It, it does, and that, that answers the question that you guys are utilizing, some of the um, uh, the forecasting that's taking place over at WSU as well.
It'll create biases on our forecasts, I mean, if you just told me what's the average sales tax our last ten years, I could tell you and we could reject that line. Obviously, I'd be ultra simplistic, uh, and that's kind of where we start, but then we, you know, we'll tweak it up or down based on things that we know are happening or a variety of other factors and things that you just mentioned are the other factors that we would use to tweak our forecast on things like that.
Yeah, and they generally deliver, they deliver that data to us in May, so that would be something that would be included in the May workshop.
Wonderful.
So it includes retail sales and then, um, things regarding real estate.
All right, further questions? No one else? Elizabeth, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll, I'll see you in a month. I'll be, I'll be back in my, um, I'll be back in my office and I'll see you in a month. So, thank you for your attention.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Manager, what's next?
Well, that's it, Mayor.
You sure?
Yeah, yes, I'm definitely sure.
Excellent, well, if there's no objection, then we shall adjourn this, this workshop. No objections seen, we're adjourned, thank you all.